This is the September 16th, 2021 Irving Planning Board Meeting. Sonhee, I think you're out there. Can you say something so we know if we can hear you?
I'm here. Can you hear me? Okay, now I just have to find the video. Do you see me? You don't see me.
Yeah.
Do I go into webcams? No, I don't.
Yeah.
You might have different options now. Yeah, it might say webcam.
Let's see.
Or there might be like an orange or blue button that has, oh, you got it.
There we go. All right. Is this a different webinar thing? The tiny, or is this a different format?
No, the tiny URL is just, it makes the URL smaller because the webinar link is like, like, it's like really, really long. So the tiny URL is the same thing, just a different format.
Oh, cool. All right, cool. Yay, everybody. Sorry about that.
Okay, Moonlight has got his phone and his computer going. He can't use both of them.
I just, no, I just need my, um, my computer.
Yeah, we can hear you. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:12, please.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I need up, but I think we're only missing August and September. August, wait, was it July?
It was August. I didn't, I didn't get the minutes for August. I have them. I just need to type them up. I've just been busy. So I've just got to make the time to do it and just sit and, you know, hack it out. So, okay.
Then you'll, the other ones that you added that you were gonna try to get to Dick too, right?
Right.
The ones that, right?
Yeah, and I gotta call Deb. I don't know what, what days. Deb, do you have any weekend availabilities?
Yeah.
Like a Saturday or Sunday better?
Um, to review them, Sonhee?
Yes.
Um, if you can email them to me, then I can do it whenever.
Okay.
Or if you want, that may be the easiest.
Okay.
Or if you wanted to, excuse me, or if you wanted to just drop them off with me, you can always do that too. Just toss them in my mailbox.
Okay. And then, and then you'll give me a call or we can text or something. Okay. I know it's hard because I'm sure that you're busy and I'm busy and I'm, like, during the week, it's just straight out. And so the weekends are, you know, primarily it, but then weekends are always for the catch-up thing and then trying to, you know, squeeze in space there. It's just, I feel like I'm running. Yeah, yeah.
Too much. You got, so how many kids? Five, four?
Four kids and one of them is up at Bates right now. One of them is senior at NMH. It's her senior here. So she's busy, but we keep having to go back and forth to get her. And then, um, uh, eighth grader, and then Lily, who's in third grade.
Wow.
That's a lot.
And everybody, and everybody has after-school or after-weekend, you know, on the weekend activities or something like that. So I'm just trying to squeeze everything. I'm running all the time. I'm a chauffeur, basically. So.
All right. Well, if you can try to get that, and I think there might, I don't know, there was some, the approval not required. Are those signed off yet, Mariah? Do you know?
Yeah.
I did.
Those are good.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Those are all set. They'll just go to town meeting. So you guys don't need to do anything else with those.
Okay, good. Thank you. Uh, the mail. I only got a couple things from ZBAs. One from Montague and then one from Gil. The one from Gil is kind of interesting. It's for the, the Frisbee Golf. They're making a Frisbee Golf course there, or they have already. I don't know if you guys know about it, but Oak Ridge, they turned it into a Frisbee Golf. And they want to make a ice cream shop in a driving range. So that's, they needed a ZBA to do that. Okay, the review site plan change request for French King Solar Project. I guess Brian updated us briefly when we took a tour of the IP plant on, was that Monday? He said that the holdup was they, the overhead, um, going across Route 2, they were concerned about the running the line across Route 2. So he suggested they run a cable underground. And I guess that's gonna happen. And then we, they'll be moving forward with the plan. And they'll let us know when we have to approve it. But it shouldn't have changed very significantly from the original site plan. I guess the next one, this might take quite a while. If Mariah could help lead us through it, this would be comparing the changes that you and Deb came up with the maps, I think.
So I sent out to everyone a document that actually has all of the changes side by side so that you can see them because I know it's hard to look at one and then the other and figure out what's changed. So, um, the only thing that I realized after I had sent it was that there was one change in the French King District. We pulled back the edge of the district a little bit from the water. I think that was the Conservation Commission easement there anyways. So the only thing I had forgotten to include, but everything else should be in here. So you should have, you know, had a chance to review.
Go through them together quick because I haven't studied them in detail. And I don't, have other people looked at them? I know Deb has, but have you seen these, Sonhee or Moonlight?
Had the chance to review them, no.
Okay.
No, I haven't either.
So I think it's worth taking a few minutes to go through it and if we can. And so the French King change, you cut it back a little bit, basically, from the river.
Yep, and it, you know, it's changed from the Commercial District to the French King District. Then the pod goes over the same area.
Okay.
We added, so it was VR on just the east side, and we added VR to the west side as well. Um, Strachan Street, so the pod will be added to where the Central Village is. And on this map, I extended Central Village so that they match. So the idea was, we drew this line 200, 200 feet from the end of Strachan and 500 feet from the end of Gunn to kind of make this, this little chunk here. And it'll match, CV and pod will just match. And that line is about where the fence line is, the back of the property, where the end of the developed area is.
Yeah, that, that was a big, I, I think that's, well, Moonlight and I were very surprised at how big a building that is back there. So
Yeah.
That's good.
This is on Route 63, Northfield Road, where we proposed to extend CV through, this is the parcel that has the Senior and Community Center on it. So right now it ends at the school, which didn't make much sense since this is all kind of commercial-type development anyways. So we extended that. And then same, we matched it across the road so that it would be consistent.
Good. Where does the sewer and water go to on that? Do you know?
I believe it ends at the Senior Center.
So you're, and on the other side of the street, they have sewer and water. That's, I guess that's my kind of question there.
So I don't know if they're hooked up to it, but usually when they run sewer and water, you're running it down the middle of the street or the side of the street. So I know that in front of the library, when they redid those sidewalks, they put sewer and water underneath that. So I don't, these houses are connected, but they, they could choose to connect to at some point if they're not.
And, okay, what's, I guess I've got, I, I didn't, this is the first time I've really looked at that in clarity, but that big lot out at the, on the right side, only part of it CV. Is that correct?
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's 500 feet from the road.
Okay, so what's, so that, who, who owns that big triangular lot? It's on both sides of the road there?
No idea.
So I just, it was rural residential, right?
Yeah.
And, and these are the type of questions I'm gonna be asking. I want, I'd like to know who owns it, how many acres it is. And if you go from rural residential to making it CV, you could put in, you know, how many lots can go in there?
I just, Mike, I just want to point out, we don't, we actually should not take into consideration who the property owner is. That could show bias on our point. So actually, knowing who the property owner is is probably safer because then it doesn't look like we're doing anything to favor or disfavor someone. I don't know if that's the word, but, um, so I, I think it's better if we talk more in why Mariah and I suggested these changes than as to the specifics of who owns what lots.
At least, I agree with you, Deb. At least to the point that it's not about who owns the lot, but it's about some of the other specific questions. I mean, even if we do know the person, we still can't sort of base any judgment on that. So I agree with you.
All right. I guess I need more information on this one before I'm gonna be happy with it. I just.
What information do you need, Mike?
How big that lot is and what, how many subdivision lots can be there if it's going from.
Frank, I'm not going to figure that out for you. If you'd like to calculate that based off of the bylaws and figure the subdivision bylaws, you're welcome to calculate it. But I'm not going to do that for every parcel that we're changing.
No, I'm looking at the big ones like that. Most of them are owned by the town.
Well, again, you're welcome to go through and figure out.
All right. So, yeah, that's good. I'll make notes of the ones I gotta do, so.
I guess, Mike, can you explain a little more why you're concerned about it being subdivided? Because.
All right, let's say this lot's worth 30,000 now, but you're turning it into. Yeah.
Um, with any of our zoning, whether it's CV, VR, whatever, anything can be subdivided.
Rural residential can't be subdivided into less than two acre lots.
Right. So I guess that's what I, that's, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, is it a concern of it being subdivided or is it this specific parcel being subdivided? Because any of our parcels can be subdivided. So to me, the zoning doesn't matter, subdivision.
If a parcel that's in rural residential now,
Yeah.
you're making into Central Village, what's the impact for developable lots in that, that lot? You could be making a lot in Irving probably goes for $50,000 and $100,000 now.
So I guess my question then, and that's a valid question of how many lots can you subdivide one lot into? But I guess is there a threshold that you would be on? I mean, I think right now you're, what you proposed to change this, you proposed to change the minimum lot area of Village as a quarter acre? So.
I haven't really gone along.
Can I finish blocking, please, Mike? One second? So if your, if your question is about, or your concern is about subdividing this lot, um, you know, I guess I'd like to know what the, what, where you're trying to get to. Are you saying that if there's four lots that are potential there, that you're unwilling to make this change? Or, like, what is your threshold here?
I don't know. I just think people need to understand that, I, I don't think the purpose of that was to put that many new lots on the, on the market.
That's not the purpose of it.
And that's what you're doing, kind of in effect. I don't know.
So, can I, can I? Can I jump in for a minute and just, because I'd like to be at least clear about what, what the deal is here. Can you explain to me, I think what Mike is asking, or what I'm asking, is because you changed the area to something else, does that put those lots in a different kind of category? I'm, I'm sort of wondering. Is, is that what you're asking, Mike?
Yes, yeah.
So if it does, what does it change in relationship to what it was before you changed it?
So the minimum lot area is what Mike is referring to, which is the smallest amount, the smallest size that a lot could be in a specific district. So in rural residential, the minimum lot area is approximately two acres. But in Central Village, you're proposing to change that to a quarter acre. And so if you change what something is zoned in, it could, if someone proposes a subdivision, that is the minimum lot size, but you also have your whole subdivision bylaw to go through the process to do that. So while it is true that the minimum lot size would be smaller, it's only 500 feet back. So that would only be the case for that the parcel in that section. And quite honestly, I don't think this is more than, the, I forget the, every time I bring this up, I forget the exact language and it's in here, but your parcel only subject to whichever district parcel is in. But Deb, do you remember the exact language? I could try to find it, but I think this might be a moot point anyways because if someone subdivides it, it's not all in CV. I believe it's you have to follow, and Mariah, if you can, if you have it at your fingertips, because I just don't want to misquote it. I think it is, you have to follow the zoning for the larger portion of your lot.
Ah, I remember something like that.
Um, that we do have something, but I'm not, I'm not sure of the exact portion. The other thing is, when we change zoning, oh, um, I believe it's almost like a, oh, you would probably know this one too, Mariah. The zoning change does not necessarily affect the current property owner. Um, but I don't remember. I know we looked into this before and I don't remember. I have it in my notes. But it was something with how, if we change the zoning, how it actually applies to the property when we make the change.
Well, I brought this question up a couple, a while back because I was wondering about the changing of the zones and what effect it would have on the property or, or whatever. And I thought that, I heard someone say that it goes with the larger part of the property, whatever section that portion is in, the whole piece goes that way. If that's the case, then it's almost a moot point, I guess, but I'd like to find out whether that's true or not.
I just found it, Mariah. It's on page.
Thank you.
If you're in the zoning. Um, if you want to, so you can show it. It's on page 11. It's section 3.4.3. It's right at the bottom. It's like the last bullet on the page. So where district, district boundary line divides any lot existing at the time such line is adopted, the following conditions shall apply. If the lot has frontage, okay, so this is good because it does have frontage. So if a lot has frontage within only one district, the requirements of that district shall govern the entire lot. If the lot has frontage with more districts, the owner may follow the requirements of the more restrictive district or follow the requirements of the less restrictive district into the more restrictive district for a distance no greater than 30 feet. So because we were looking at, uh, oh God, I have so many things open. Um, like, so for example, one does have frontage all in CV, so it would all be covered under CV.
Okay. Does that help out all, Mike?
Yeah, well, that makes it worse for me. That means the whole thing can be considered CV, the whole lot.
Mike, can I ask why you're so concerned about subdividing the lots? What, like, can you explain a little bit more about your concerns there?
I don't, you could, I'd like to, I'm gonna do a calculation, find out how many lots can go into that parcel. I mean, it could go from, I don't know. I'm, I don't know how big that is, but it probably is at least six acres. It could go to, we're at a half acre now. If we adopt a quarter acre, that would be 24 lots in there.
But I guess my question would be, Mike, why is that a bad thing? Do you, do you not want growth for the community? I.
Well, we were talking, other people were saying, this is considered rural residential before you made this change. And now you, and we weren't changing other things from rural residential. You backed off on that, I thought, maybe.
Changed other stuff from rural residential.
This was all the rivers, this was all rural residential. We changed it to VR.
Yeah, and I'm not sure I agree with that either, to be truthful. For the same reasons, I gotta look at it more carefully.
Okay, well, Mike, can I request that? I guess I feel like we've had this map for several months now and you keep saying that you want to look at it more carefully. So if.
All right, I, I, let's do it this way. If you want, I'd like to get the pubs approved. But I think the rest of the map's gonna take a lot of work to get it approved me before I'm ready to sign off on it.
Okay, well, you're also not the only one. So folks, if other folks are interested in keeping going and voting on it, then they can do that. I don't know how other folks are feeling. They want me to continue explaining the changes or if you'd rather stop discussing it and let Mike continue to.
I got two, two options. We can go through the rest of this. And I think it's worthwhile so I can see if there's other things that I have questions on. Then I would like to make a motion to accept the pods as presented and make, take that to county, town meeting, but I, I'm not ready to sign off on the rest of this map.
So, so I, in this position, I'd like to know what we as a committee can do to clear it up so that you, Mike, along with the rest of us, get clearer about what you want to see. And, and, I mean, there has to be some understanding of why it should or should not be like it is. And I think that's what we need to get to. If you want to sign off to it, then we should move on with it. And then we can talk about it because it may be a philosophical viewpoint that we haven't really discussed yet. I mean, I think it's something that we're talking about.
So I, I think, well, Mike, am I, and I'm just conjecturing here, but are you thinking like conservation? You're worried about conservation because of, you know, you don't want to develop where you want to conserve things or, and keep the land?
That was probably why that was rural residential to begin with, was because it was next to the river. But I don't know.
Because if you do subdivide it and stuff, that just means more development, which means that conservation wouldn't, you know, it wouldn't be, you know, um, it wouldn't be the conservation or keeping things, you know, natural in that state. It would be building upon it, right? And you're worried about that, maybe.
I'm just, again, I, I, I'm more worried about some of the changes in lot, how many lots are gonna become available in different areas.
Yeah.
And I'll try to figure that out. I'll talk with Jackie, I guess.
Yeah, and what's, and then once it's subdivided, does it go under a different category or something? Or, no, we just read.
Well, I think they can do it by right if they've got enough frontage to do what, you know, if, 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 if you have two acres and we say you can have a half acre lot and you have enough frontage, I think you, you can do it by right that you have.
Three or four lots? Right?
Yeah, yeah, you could end up with four lots where you used to have one.
Is it?
The question, Mike, I think is, is, is that particular opportunity something that doesn't please you?
I don't know. I, I don't, I think it's something we gotta, the town needs to be aware of what we're doing when we're doing this.
Right.
That's why we have a public hearing. So the, we, we would, you know, make our changes and then submit it for the public hearing. And that is when the residents have the choice. Our meetings are also public and posted, so residents have the choice to attend our meetings and, and see these things. As far as, I just want to say, as far as subdividing goes, we also have the subdivision control bylaw. So in our community, you actually can't build more than, I believe it's 12 houses a year. So there, there is also that control as well.
And I mean, rezoning like this, it's, it's just to clarify the.
Yeah, there's a whole, I'm sorry, my audio and camera is cutting out a little bit, so I apologize if I'm missing anything, but.
Um, so making these zones, zoning areas, it's just to clear, to clear, make it more clear and not so jigsaw puzzly, right? Where it's like odd, odd little, you know, bumps and whatever. Because before, I think there were more, it wasn't a smooth line, you know what I mean?
Correct. Part of it, Sonhee, is we're trying to make the districts be, even them up. So when Mariah and I looked at this and we realized those, the parcels on the opposite side of the street were things like the Senior Center, the school, the library, it doesn't make sense to have those in rural residential when we're using them in more of a commercial kind of use. So that district, it was felt very natural to extend that on that side of the street. And then as we looked at it a bit more, it didn't feel right to have the district go so far on one side, but not on the other. And when we looked at the lots, they seemed, you know, there's many other lots in CV that are sizable lots that have existed in CV for years and years. So we looked at that and said, okay, you know what? Let's just even it up and we'll just have it be a nice straight line. And then it's even on both sides of the street. Kind of our same thinking over on River Road where we looked at those lots. Now, rural residential, in theory, is a, you know, is an area where you have a house and then you have, you know, a couple hundred yards between the next house. You know, they're, they're, they're two acre lots. They're good sizes. I know personally, when I drive down River Road, that to me does not scream rural residential. The houses are right next to each other. The lots are small, except for maybe one or two. You know, so when her and I looked at that, it seemed very natural that that area become Village because that's more so what it has developed into. You know, so that was our thinking. I can very honestly say, we never looked at who owned what. We never thought, we didn't, I don't want to say we didn't think about subdivision, but that was not a driving factor in doing some of this stuff. I know personally, to me, I'm not against seeing some more housing and things like that. So, you know, I'm, I'm okay with subdivision. I think we have enough other controls in place to kind of make sure that we're not blowing up and selling every single piece of land we have. You know, we do have a really strong subdivision control bylaw.
Well, I agree with you about, I agree with you about River Road because it doesn't, the, the houses aren't that far apart. And I ride on it a lot. And so, um, no, it's not necessarily rural. And I don't think it hurt anything by extending it to the river. I don't really think that anything was done in that manner. So there wasn't a lot of alterations. There are some other things that, that. So there wasn't a lot of alterations. There, there are some other things that, that are being at least done and should be understood by everybody. And if I was on the other side of this, not as a part of the committee, I wouldn't even know sometimes what questions to ask to be clear about some of this. So I think that what Mike is, for me, what Mike is bringing up is that how do we successfully express this to the public when they have these kind of questions come up?
Well, that's what the document that Mariah is showing us, that right now that shows all the changes, like each individual change. Her intention, I don't wanna speak for her, but in creating this was this would go out to people. So they, you know, they had this, so they could see very specifically each change, and as she has done here, the little synopsis of why that change was considered.
Okay. On the other side of the road, you changed it from Central Village to Village Residential, is that, am I missing it?
On River Road?
Yeah.
River Road was rural, rural residential, and we changed it to, to Village.
Okay, uh, okay, I see now. Okay, I got it. Could, going back to that other one quickly, Mariah, I just had one, the, the one from the library. Well, the, the lot that the library is on, so one with the circle, was that right, or? Is it way down there? Okay.
And then the senior center is here, and this is that big open field.
Okay. Okay, the senior centers, what's that?
The elementary school.
I don't, oh, that's, I see. All right, I got you. Okay. Yeah, so that makes sense. So the town owns that lot, then, if you're right.
The town owns all, all of it.
Okay, so they must own, all right, that makes me feel better about the other side, too.
And is, which, which one of those lines is the water going down? Is that in the, the red in the center of the road?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There, there, in the center of the road, there's a red line and some other lines. Which one is the water? Is that, is that sort of where the water runs through the street, you know?
I don't think that's on this map. Um, I think those are, uh, I would have to go look. I don't, I don't know what those lines are off the top of my head. I'm sorry.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. That, I feel, I feel better that, I thought the library, I thought the senior center was down by that circle, but that's the elementary school. They didn't show the road for the the library and stuff on here.
It's right there. That's the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on, this is, um, over at the IP mill area. And we extended CV. So right now, CV extended on the south side of Route Two, but it didn't extend on the north side. So we matched those up, and then the PUD go overlays where the IP mill is. There were no changes in Farley, although Deb and I both realized that the new map that Ryan gave us, it, it seems like Farley shrunk. So we were just gonna make sure that, uh, that that stays accurate to what we had intended. I think that was more of a mistake in the mapping software. And then we hit Irving Side. This weird little edge, this is the westernmost edge of town, so I, let's see, I think this is Mountain Road, is that right? No. West Main Street. Anyways, this is the western edge. What was that?
Where are you pointing to? I don't see the cursor.
This, can you see that?
Oh, I see, I see now, yeah.
So this is the western edge of CV in Irving Center. We just, uh, kind of marked a, a straighter line at the edge of this weird parcel that kind of goes up the hill. And because it seems strange that CV of, of these parcels, but not along Route Two, where it's, you know, where it would make more sense to actually have CV. And then we marked that at a thousand feet.
Deep bank, isn't it up? Is that by Son He's house, kinda? Or am I?
Don't know where Son He lives, but yes, it's deep bank. Son He, we can't hear you if you're talking.
Sorry, so I live on Mountain Road, which is near the cemetery, or you know, where you turn up for the cemetery. Gary Street, Mountain Road, they're like this in the cemetery.
Yeah, this is, it, this is pretty steep. It, it kind of, I think this parcel is like a, a, an old kind of access road that kind of goes up the, the hill there. This is the northeastern section of CV. Along Route Two, so where kind of the active paper mill is. We marked that off at the edge of the state forest. And put PUD over it, over most north and south of Route Two, where the current mill area is. This is North Street and High Street, and this section over here is the state forest. So we just, we followed along the edge of the state forest there. It wouldn't matter anyways, because it's state forest, but we figured it would just look cleaner on the map. And then, um, same thing for up here. We just, we, we took out the state forest land, so it just, it looked, it was a little bit more clear that way. Same with Swamp Road. And that's it.
Thank you. No, that's a good job. Thanks for putting that together.
It looks good.
So I guess my only, I, I feel better about the lo, library and the senior center and may look at River Road a little more carefully. I, I agree with you. Those are pretty, from what I remember, those houses are all pretty close together, like Moonlight said, down River Road, so.
Are you guys ready to vote on the map and move forward? I know, Mike, you're ready to move forward, but PUD, you can vote on the map. Now, if you'd like.
Well, I'd like to, I, if someone would make a motion to accept the, the PUDs as shown, that would be if, if, if that would be possible.
Sure, I'll make the, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the PUD.
I'll second it.
To just add the PUD as shown on the August twenty twenty-one zoning map.
Let's see, Son He makes the motion to approve the PUD as shown on the.
Draft.
And, and I'm sorry, on.
On draft, August.
On the August twenty twenty-one?
Draft.
Okay, and Mike, you second? I, I'm sorry, um, Moonlight, you second?
Yeah, I do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Okay, and then, Mariah, you'd like to, I, I'll make a, would someone make a motion to accept the rest of the zoning changes as presented in the August twenty, this twenty-second, you said, or twenty-first?
August twenty twenty-one. I don't have a, there's no, there's no day date. It's just August twenty twenty-one zoning map.
Oh, August twenty twenty-one. Map as, draft map as presented.
Make a motion to accept the changes to the August twenty twenty-one draft zoning map.
Second.
To approve. The August.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll abstain. So it passes three ayes and then an abstention.
Okay. Moonlight, you, you second?
I do.
Okay. I, um, Mike abstains.
Hey, Son He.
Yes.
Don't be afraid to tell us to slow down, 'cause I know it'll take motions in minutes. So if we're going too fast, tell us, we will slow down.
It's good, it's good. All, all I accept, Mike abstains.
You earned the right.
All I make up states. There we go.
Thank you, Brian, Deb, putting that together, too. That was, that was a lot of work, I know. Brian asked Deb and I at the meeting, we went to the site visit on Monday to the IP mill. And they, we need to have a joint meeting with the selectmen, the select board, to, uh, vote in Janice Vega Lyons, and they, he, Ryan had to get the agenda out, so he's got it scheduled for Monday, the twentieth, which is next Monday. I think Deb and I can make it. If, if you guys can make it, that would be great. You should have get an invite from Brian, I believe. You got one, Deb, didn't you, probably? To the selectman?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you, if you need to get, if you, do, we don't all have to be there. I guess is what Brian said. Two of us, if, if just two of us are there, it's adequate, but if you guys could make it, that would be good, too.
And that's at town hall?
No, that will be during a web, a webinar. So you'll be joining, I, do you know the time, Deb, on that?
It's at six thirty-five, and it, like Brian said, I think it'll take all five minutes.
Okay. So I guess we should be prompt on that one, huh? If you snooze, you lose.
Did you say it's a webinar, and what day was it?
Monday.
Monday, Monday, the twentieth.
Or the twenty-seventh.
No, it's gonna, they, he, he, he had to get the agenda out, so he put it on the twentieth. So it will be this one day.
All right.
Okay, I don't know. This is the most boring part. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to look through these. I'd like to go through some of them. Mariah, have you, did you get any feedback from legal counsel on any of them? Do you know?
I am not part of the certification, so, uh, I don't know really anything about this.
All right, well, let me, let me, I, what I did, I went through the first half of them. There are about thirty questions. I went through like the first fifteen. And maybe we could bring them up, and I can tell you what I, I thought, and then and you guys might think differently, I don't know, but let me. Do you have that, where we can look at it as a group, kinda?
I'm looking for it. I don't, I don't know, hold on.
It would have been sent by Brian. I have a, these were at the town office, too, and I don't know if anybody got a chance to pick them up, but they were a big, it looks like a, I don't know, it's prob, it looks pretty impressive anyhow. It's, it's when you, but they were in the, in with our other mail, with, when you went in to do, sign off on them, you could have picked one up. Okay.
I remember correctly, Brian had, I believe Brian said at our last meeting that legal has already looked at this document.
Yeah, I, he, well, he had said they had, but that if we had questions, and I had a few. The first one, to me, was one I'd like her to explain to, Donna, to explain to us. It was, it has to do with consultants and conflict of interest. But I didn't, it's, it was it was one I, I didn't feel comfortable. I didn't understand exactly what they were trying to do.
So, Mike, I'm here, and what I'll do is I'm gonna make cop notes on every page that you guys tell me you have questions on. And if I remember correctly, you said you wanna meet with council at your October meeting, so I'm gonna schedule her for that.
Okay, well, this was one I, I mean, I didn't understand very well, so it's one I'd like to have her.
You're talking about page number one?
Yeah, so it would be two thirty oh, oh, one.
Okay.
And maybe other people understand, but, but if you go to the next page, a lot of these we can say are good. You know, this one was.
Real, real quick, I just wanna make sure I, I get the right question to her. So what's the question about oh, one?
Yeah, I just don't, I didn't understand.
Okay.
Understand, it's changing the qualifications for consultants and, uh, why, you know, I guess.
Got it. Okay, so we're looking for an explanation of why this is a recommended change.
Yeah, that's kind of what I. The next one, though, was, you know, an easy one. It was instead of a vacancy of the board, they changed it to on the board. So it's grammatical, and I, you know, I
How you doing?
I didn't think it was needed, but it, it, it could be, you know, we could say, yeah, go ahead and change it, too, but it's, it's not it's not, um, um, any big change, really. It's changing of to on.
Yeah, and to explain, the, the grammar ones, even though they may seem silly, they can be really important if you, if anyone ever sues you, because when they go to actually read the law that you and your, you know, someone who's applying for something are following, like, that's why, like, something as silly as of or on can make the difference of clarifying a particular situation. So that's why they recommend these changes, is for clarity, and then for, you know, that clarity can then protect you in the future to be, you know, as clear and concise as possible.
So that one, I, I said was, oh, you know, I, okay. So you would hit revise as suggested, I guess. And the next one was, uh, it just was incomplete. They needed to add forty A to this, after forty. So, I mean, that, I would say, would revise as suggested.
Right.
Let's see. Okay, the next one was, yeah, this made a sense to me. Rather than putting the date of the our map, zoning map, just put depicted on the most recently adopted. So you don't have to keep going in and changing the bylaw every time a map gets updated.
Right, 'cause if you miss that, and I think we would have missed that, because you've updated the map, I think, one more time since two thousand and five. And you could have a conflict between your bylaw and the most recently adopted map. So that's actually a good idea.
So I'd recommend, you know, we revise to suggest it for that one. Number five was another, or plan thereof. Another, or planned thereof, or parked thereof. I mean, again, I'm okay. It wasn't a big change, so. I, I would think you'd, revise as suggested. This was kind of, you could either go with either option they give you above, but we didn't have 5,000 square feet exactly covered. We had greater than and less than, but not equal to, so. So you got two choices. You can go revise second entry to 5,000 square feet or greater, which. Or not more than, I don't know, if anybody has any preference.
I like one.
One? Okay. Let's do revise as suggested in one. Are you marking these off for anybody, or?
Yep, I'm, I'm keeping track right here.
Alright. Number, are we up to what, eight? Is that what we're on? Oh. Oh, I missed it.
This is about revising the use table, so that each use under the category is listed alphabetically.
That makes sense, doesn't it, to us? Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
So revise as suggested. The next one was another one I had questions for legal on. It has no more than one principal structure dwelling, they erect it on any lot. And I, if we're gonna go with auxiliary dwelling units. Detached, this is, I don't think this is gonna work. Maybe I'm way off.
It does. So the, the definition of the auxiliary, of the dwelling units, the ADUs, is it specifically called out that it's not a principal use, it's, it's additional. So this question is only asking if you want to make these match. If you want, because one of them says no more than one principal structure, and then this one says not more than one dwelling shall be put upon any such lot. So it's just asking which phrasing you want to go with.
So, I, again, I'm so sorry, I, I'm misunderstanding what, can, can, can you, you, can you put an auxiliary dwelling unit and still meet that requirement?
Principal, so in this case, Mike, principal would mean your house, and then the accessory would be the accessory dwelling unit. So the principal house would be the main house.
Oh.
So, and actually, in, in researching ADUs, I have found that a lot of, a lot of other town zoning uses for to the one with the word principal in it.
I, okay. You guys seem to understand this better than I do. I, I.
So would you say Deb, the first one?
I would. I noticed in a couple of different towns that they use the word principal when they talk about ADUs, and it's like, it cannot, you know, that there must be the principal dwelling and all that kind of stuff. But principal is, I've seen it in the zoning quite a bit, and it's the one, when I read this, that I thought made sense.
I'd go with you.
Yeah, because I, I do think that the second one would eliminate ADUs, because it would be one dwelling. So not, if you want to have the ADU, like you voted previously, number one, like Deb said, is the one that you want.
I think, Mike, in your, for me, it worked a little better to, to understand it. Instead of, in my brain, instead of using the word principal, I used the word main. Like, this is the main dwelling, and that's the secondary dwelling.
Okay, I, I guess I'm, so you, what, what, what do we emphasize? Would I go with one? Is that what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So both sections have the text currently highlighted in 234.2A. So we have to go to, to another.
No, don't do anything. You just, it's just saying that 234.2A is the first one.
Okay.
I'm pointing with my finger like you can see it.
I got you. I see that. I, I, so you're, you're saying, because there it just says one principal structure, you could still have an auxiliary dwelling, okay.
Yeah.
So that was what I was gonna ask her to help explain, but Deb finally did explain it okay.
So you can, you can send me a check for a thousand dollars.
Oh, yes.
That's my legal fee.
Alright, so, does that, is everybody okay with one on that one?
Yeah, I am.
Alright.
I'm gonna start calling you Deb Smith Esquire.
Alright, we're up to 09 wireless communication official zoning map. We didn't put. Instead of just add the word map to official zoning, so they left, we left out the map part of it, so. I guess revise as suggested. And. Number 10 was. It was just grammatical, I think, too. I, I kind of like number three, where they want to change Massachusetts Aeronautics Commission to one of the following. I, I, I picked Aeronautics Division within MassDOT, but I don't know. But I guess any of those are good. Anybody else care which one?
I picked three too.
Okay.
That seems to make the most sense, because it's aeronautics division within MassDOT. You, you, it tells you where you can find it, right?
Right.
I'm agreeing.
Okay. Geez, we're doing better than I expected on these, okay. Uh, the next one had to do with. This is the consultant questions again. So I, I, it referred back to the first question, so I, I had that. I'd still would like Donna's input on it.
Okay, I'll make a note for that.
I, if I can just offer, I, I haven't looked at this until now, but I think this is just asking how you want to reference the, this language in the other part of, like, MGL or this bylaw. So number one is saying you can reference these provisions in our own bylaw. Number two is saying you can reference these rules through MGL. It's not asking about what those rules are, just how you point people to where they are located. Does that make sense? Like you're saying on page three of our bylaw, or you're saying go online and look at the Massachusetts general law.
That's how I took it, and I picked number one, because I figured it was, I want them looking at our bylaw in case it was different than MGL.
Does that make sense to you, Mike? It's not actually changing the substance of the rule, it's just saying how they can find it.
Yeah, I think I. Where. Yeah, I got you.
Did you say number one?
But if we do it in, I guess I'd, I'd like number one, because then we, we may not follow. Or do we have to follow? The 53G. I think, you know, you're right, if we do it to our own. Yeah, that, that is, that, it says this section. If we do it to whatever we make our first subsection. Like number one will be okay. I see what you're saying, Mariah, yeah. So we're referencing our own. I guess bylaw. So you want to go with one on this?
That was my pick.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, number 12. Any restriction previously posed, they changed the word to imposed. So it's just another grammatical change. I guess we're, I just suggested, is that alright for folks? And 13. I thought maybe we could look at this one as a group, if possible. We'd have to bring up our, the subsection.
You want me to pull that up?
Did you look at this, Deb? Yeah.
So I think right now your parking requirements are, it just, this is just saying, the title of this requirement, and then it goes into their requirements, and this is saying, as the sentence offered, parking shall be provided as follows. So where's parking? 25? This just says requirement, and they're asking if you want to put. Say. Off-road parking shall be provided as follows. And then it would say dwelling, two parking spaces per dwelling unit, and so on. Because here you say the following shall apply.
Yeah, I think it's just another cleaning up the grammar kind of thing. Oh, wait, just lost Mike.
I did not, because I did not want to overwhelm your inbox, I didn't send you all the draft manuscript. The, the actual 360 pages that all of these questions relate back to. If you really wanted to see what that actually looks like, I, I'm happy to send it to you, but I felt like it was information overkill. But for anybody who's interested, I'm happy to share.
Brian, while we wait for Mike to come back, am I correct in understanding, this needs to have a public hearing? But we can do the public hearing on the document as a whole, not each individual change, so if we have 20, we don't need 20 hearings, right?
I think that's the question. You can do one hearing, I just don't know how you vote it. So I, that's, I think, we have Donna join you all in October. I think that's an important question that we want to get distinction on, because I have not had the chance to sit through one of your planning board hearings yet, and see how you take those votes. And I do believe when you've taken those votes, it's only been a few changes. It's not been something this comprehensive. So if you're doing this in the zoning map, and maybe, maybe, you know, something to do with PUD, if you're doing all of those things, I think we definitely want her guidance on how to structure that hearing.
My guess would be. My guess would be that you could, you would list these all out, and people could, you would have, and you would probably offer, not for the hearing, but for town meeting, you would offer a vote language that was either for all of it, and people could just do all of the amendments, or if they wanted to do all except for question 230013, and then we could discuss that one specifically and vote on that one.
I think we're gonna do something like that.
Okay, I was just worried with some radical ones, that we didn't have to have 20 public hearings, because we made 20 changes. If we can wrap it into one public hearing, that's, that's great.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed your conversation about this one, off-road parking. What, what did you decide to do?
And it was just a grammar. It's just a sentence. It's adding. So instead of just saying requirements, it will say requirements, off-road parking shall be provided as follows. So it's just a grammar thing.
Okay, so revise as suggested?
Yeah.
Okay. 14. This one was about parking. They added, they want to make sure there was enough spaces. Parking spaces for the shift that had the most people, so on the largest shift. I, I think that's okay. And I only went to one more pa, or I think page 15. Need to revise as a group, okay. This one. I didn't understand this one either. For parking areas for 10 or more vehicles, the following shall apply. In this section C, subject sections three and five may be unnecessarily redundant in regard to screening of parking areas next to residential uses. You look, did we look at that at all? So they're saying.
Parking areas for 10 or more vehicles is redundant with loading required?
I think they're talking about your bullets.
Oh, sorry. Which ones are they saying are redundant?
Three and five. So C and E.
So such lots require screening from any abutting residential use by dense shrubs, trees, or opaque fencing, not in consideration of the character, or. Adequate, adequate screening of parking areas from a residential parcel and roadways shall be provided. So this one is more specific. A minimum five-foot wide buffer area shall provide adequate screening. Such buffer area shall be planted with a combination of evergreen and deciduous shrubs that are at least five feet in height. Solidwood fencing also be used, which may reduce the buffer area required. So they're asking if you want to get rid of one of these, because they basically mean the same thing, except for one is more specific.
I would get rid of C and keep E.
I like that it's con-
Mike, I think you cut out, or at least for me.
Hey, Mike.
We're losing you again, Mike.
Maybe try turning off your camera and just using audio. Sometimes, if you only have a limited bandwidth, that can help.
You like me, Mike?
I think Mike cut off the internet again.
I'm sorry, guys, I just caused trouble.
That's why we love you.
Suggested one is to delete subsection C, so I think that, that's what they also assumed, that we'd want to keep the more in detail.
Someone said they like D? Was that you, Sonhei, that said you like D? Was it you, said you liked D?
No, I think C, it was the more detailed one, right?
Um, the, getting rid of, yeah, E is the more detailed one.
Yeah, I'd like the E.
Okay.
So keep E and lose C. So. So keep E and Lucy. So we go with your recommendation.
Yeah, delete. And then the last one. It has to do with sign regulation. Okay, yeah. So this is basically asking, this is basically saying that we can't regulate signs off of content only by types of signs. So this is something that town council will have to help draft through piece of language for this one.
We actually, and I and I don't know if this would kind of go in tandem with us. Our sign by law is kind of outdated. And I think we should be looking at it again. Um, because I know we don't take into account like electric signs or message boards or any of that kind of stuff. So maybe this is a good time to put our sign by law as something that we need to tackle next.
So what do you mean? What do you mean when you say this is what? Sign, we don't have any by law for electric signs?
Our sign by laws don't cover them. So right now, like, um. If someone wanted to put an open sign up in their window that turns on and off, I believe it's actually not allowed with our by law. Um, like sandwich board signs, our sign by law actually seems pretty restrictive. Um, but you know, if someone wanted to put up a sign that was digital, we don't have a provision for those. We don't have any regulation for those. And. I don't know about anyone else, but when you drive through. Just past the Orange Library and there is a building with a giant electric sign and it lights up the whole neighborhood. I can't fathom living near that sign. Um, but we don't have any provisions for any of that kind of stuff, and I think we should.
Okay, uh, we should take a look at it. I mean, we did the same thing with sound.
Yep.
So I guess my question would be, if you are going to revise that anyways. Are you going to try to do that at the same time? Do you want to try to have that be part of the same public hearing as all these other changes you've made? Or do you want to say deferred decision or do not revise right now? We do that whole by law rather than trying to do that at the same time as all this other stuff? Or do you want to try to do that? Now?
I personally, I know, like, I've read this and I think I kind of understand what it means, but I'd like to hear Donna's input. On it, and I don't know if. I mean, if we get the sign by law done to have it for. To go with this project, I think that would be great. I don't know if we have the bandwidth to do that right now. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
Well, I I if it doesn't sound. If it's not long-winded kind of thing, I mean, we should be able to ruffle our way through it. But if it takes more than I can see at hand, I think we should give it some energy.
Okay.
It's pretty, not that it's long, long, uh, I don't remember where it is. Uh. Simonage signage thirty-two. Is that?
Yeah, I believe that's right. I can never find anything when we're looking for it, so.
I know.
Yeah, you just scrolled right by it.
Thirty-two.
I just saw non-conforming signs.
Signs.
About as far as I want to get to was this page. That's all I reviewed. I was gonna do the rest of them next meeting. Um, but.
So these are all the sign regs. And then there's uh premises signs, non-conforming signs, exempt signs.
Okay.
What page?
Page, it's our page twenty-seven.
Okay, I can't see it. I really can't see it when you guys show it, but I'll look at it uh when we get off.
Okay.
So let's, that's good for today for me for the bylaws. We can look at the rest of them next next time.
And you still want town council to join you? Well, I can be prepared to talk about.
If anybody has questions that they they have for if they could forward them to her. Or you.
Yeah, have anybody who has questions, please send them to my attention and I'll put them together on one communication to town council. That way she doesn't miss anything and. Doesn't have multiple people asking different questions. I'll just sort of aggregate it into one communication.
Good. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, thank you, Brian. Of course.
Okay, the old business, I I think, Mariah, you. At one time you had put together a tried our old bylaws and our new marijuana bylaws in a email. Uh.
So I'm sure I did do that, but I have everything here. I did make a mistake last time I was copying and pasting, and I just want you all to look at these and make sure. That they're what you remember voting on. This one in particular, I'm pretty sure this is what you voted on for marijuana delivery only retailer. I think that it was in, let's see, yes, in Central Village, yes, in French King, no, in Village Residential. And special permit in rural residential, or was it special permit for everything except for Village Residential?
I think we were going pretty much special permit across the board last time on on things. Deb, do you remember?
I am trying to think of that and I'm looking at my notes right here.
I said it was across the board too.
Delivery marijuana delivery special permit across the board.
Excellent. Thank you.
And Mariah, the other one, um. Retail businesses larger than five thousand, I have, um, we were turning that to special permit. And uh, it was actually both micro businesses and delivery were special permitted across the board.
Okay, so this little permit and then the retail product stores up to five thousand or greater than five?
Greater than five thousand was special permit.
All the way across?
Well, that's where my notes stop.
I because this you have up to five thousand, you had special permit in Central Village, special permit in the French King, and then no. In the VR and RR, which logically that sounds like something you guys would vote.
Yep, I'm wondering if I was thinking. Maybe.
Maybe it was the same or a special permit for CV and French King.
Yes, and you, yeah, yep.
Does that sound right to everybody?
Yeah, I think we were pretty much special permit almost everywhere. Yeah, I think so too.
And are you gonna take out where we have it twice?
Where do we have it twice?
Uh, marijuana delivery only retailer is in there twice.
Thank you. I tried to give those as I could, but. I really I missed some. When I copied and pasted this in, something really happened, which is why this got messed up. And so it was, uh, I had to go back and like compare my notes to what was originally there and it was kind of a mess. But, um, yeah, anyways, I think that's where we ended up. Um. So I think last time you guys voted on this, you thought it was fine. Um, I think you voted on the use table overall. And thought that it was fine. Same with definitions. I started writing up a memo, a draft memo to the select board. Um, not that, oh my God, I have so many things open. Um. A draft memo to the select board, trying to summarize the changes. I started to write out the changes that you did on the use table. And I might just copy and paste the use table in here because it was taking me a really long time, but, um. I think if I copied and paste the use table and copied and paste the dimensional table and then any. Is that are not part of those, we can write out and that way you all can keep track of the changes and when you eventually your joint meeting. You'll be able to include that, the draft that has the actual track changes on it, the map, and then that map document that I made you guys. Side by side. So hopefully that would be enough for you all and the select board to have an in-depth conversation about all of the changes.
Did. Okay, this isn't, we haven't accepted that dimensional schedule yet. Is that, is this just?
Notes on here that are either or. I think you were. I think that you were still looking at requirements and then the rear setback.
Well, I'm also concerned about the square footage. You, we went from like a half acre to a quarter acre. That was kind of based just on your guesstimate.
I think in some of those, it was actually because we've reviewed property and lot sizes in some of those areas. And I think in a lot and I know like central. Um, and even in VR, a lot of our lot sizes start at a quarter acre. Um, if not even, I hate to say it, but a little smaller. Um, so I think that's more kind of where that suggestion might be coming from.
Yeah, I don't, I I guess I'm not ready to vote on that. So it's it's still either or right now, you're saying, kind of.
Right. I guess, Mike, what do you need to be able to?
Okay.
I guess, what what do you need to be able to make a decision? Because the board can vote anytime, but what is there? What information helps you decide how you feel on that?
Well, it was again, the you 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 what the the data says, how how big the lots are now would be good. I know you. You couldn't get that data very easily, I don't think, or can you?
I think that Jackie had sent out some data on it, but I don't know what exactly you're looking for. I mean, we, she had sent out that information on that looked at different lot sizes and different neighborhoods.
Yeah, can you send that again to me? Because I don't remember seeing it. If you, I don't.
I can try to find it, but you might be, I mean, you can try to dig emails. If I find it, I'll send it over.
Right.
I guess, Mike, can you explain a little bit more? Because I I feel like you're just asking for more information, but you're not. I guess I don't have a sense of what your concern is.
Well, you're taking a half acre lot down to a quarter acre. So again, if someone had a two acre lot, they could put in. Four, eight. Quarter acre houses and that, and that's happening in North Hampton. Is that what we want? They're putting up. Big McMansions on quarter acre lots.
I don't think you can fit a McMansion on a quarter acre lot, but uh, I think also after if you're subdividing and something doesn't have frontage. You have to put in an access road that then creates your frontage. You have to put a road. So if you have a two acre lot, you're not going to be able to subdivide that into four lots when. Those are, you know, an eight acre lot because you would have to have frontage for all of those lots. It's not like you can just like have random little squares of land out in the middle of nowhere that don't have access.
So so am I to understand that some of the issues around here is that we still have. Some control over how this quarter acre lot is put up. Do we should have some control over it? I mean.
Sorry, go ahead.
And our bylaws doesn't say that it you need a certain amount of frontage to make it happen.
That's also on this table. So this table has the minimum lot area, the minimum lot frontage, your setbacks, your maximum height. And your maximum lot coverage, which is a percentage. So that's the other thing is like a McMansion on a quarter acre lot, you can only cover seventy percent of a quarter acre. To be in compliance in Central Village. I know I personally live on less than a quarter acre and, you know, my house is not very big. And I couldn't fit a much bigger house on it if I tried.
Okay. Well.
In answer to your other question, Moonlight, in order to subdivide, if you're if you're subdividing with the intent of a building lot. Both the lots, when they're done being subdivided, have to have the appropriate frontage. So like I my my acre, I have almost three quarters of an acre. I'm pretty sure if I went out and measured my frontage. I don't think I would be able to subdivide, even though I have a sizable parcel, because I wouldn't be able to frontage the other lot frontage.
Okay, all right. So that's one of the things that that, you know, I would be concerned about that if you divide up in the quarter acre lot that. You could violate that frontage rule that, I mean, it's just it it becomes a little bit unruly at this point.
Yeah, I I guess my other, I mean, I know, Mike, you keep bringing this up, but there seems to be a lot of fear about people putting in tons and tons of houses. And I think that you need to challenge, you need to kind of explain that fear on its head because. The the if you don't want more houses, I think that 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 in itself is an argument to be made, but. Uh, you know, I I'm not in favor of not putting any more houses in Irving, which I'm not on the planning board, so I don't have a voting. You know, I don't have a stake in this game other than offering my opinion and my suggestions, but, uh. I think that that's kind of what you're saying, Mike, is that you're you're nervous about there being too many houses in Irving.
I'm just nervous about someone having a a lot now that has a house on it. They tear it down and then they they put in eight little houses somewhere.
And I guess why are you scared of that?
I don't, I, well, that's a character, I mean. Of the area, uh, if if. I know the people in North Hampton aren't very happy with what's going on down there, but.
Well, you're also not anything like North Hampton, to be honest. They're too, you know, you're not. Irving and North Hampton have many, many differences when it comes to development. And, you know, uh. I I think I've I've heard you explain that you would really like to have more affordable housing in Irving and having smaller minimum lot sizes accomplishes that.
I don't agree with that. That's probably my, one of my fundamental issues with doing this. I I don't think it's gonna. Lower the cost of the house that much going from a half acre to a quarter acre. But. I don't like they're doing the same thing in Buckland. I went to the seminars on that where they, they're trying to match the size to the area of the. The exist, they they have the same thing, the the zoning says you need a half acre and the lot sizes are probably a third. But I don't know what it's gonna, how it's gonna help build more affordable housing going to a smaller lot size.
Because land costs money.
Not much. It's a, it's a, it's a lot worth a lot. It's a lot that's worth a lot. It's a town sewer water. In front, you know, it's not that you have a half acre or a third of an acre.
It's I I, Mike, I would challenge that as someone who is looking into and has looked for years into buying land. Um, I've looked at parcels with no sewer, no water, no electric, and they cost just as much if it's in a desired location with. Parcels, if not more than parcels with sewer water and all that. A prime example is Flag Hill. A prime example is Flag Hill. There is 30 acre, I, I think, I don't remember how many acres is up there. It sold in, I think, 2018 for 50,000. It is now on the market for, I believe, 100, if not more. Um, so land does have, I mean, the land itself does have value. And if you're someone who is looking to build, buying a smaller parcel is better than buying, you know, can be cheaper than buying a larger parcel. Um, I also think, at least for me, part of the driving factor was looking at some of these areas and seeing, especially in CV and VR, a lot of those lots are a quarter acre or smaller. So to me, it doesn't make sense to tell someone who's looking at property in Village, for example, well, you have to buy a half acre lot, even though every other lot around you is a quarter acre or smaller. Like, to me, that just doesn't seem very consistent. I, I personally, I don't want to see our housing stock blow up. But on the same token too, I do think Irving needs to grow. And I think this is a way we can do it smartly. And, and you know, again, with subdivisions, we have a subdivision control bylaw. You can only build 12 houses a year. I don't think 12 houses have been built in the last five years in Irving overall. I mean, it, it's not like we have people beating down the door, buying land and throwing up houses.
No, but River Street, Deb, had two houses last year. That's two of the 12. But they were, I mean, they were really big, fairly big houses. One of them was for sure.
Well.
Then.
One of those, if it's the one I'm thinking you're talking about, Moonlight, that was a house that had a fire. And they're rebuilding. I mean, they're, they're building bigger than original, but that is a house that had a fire and they're rebuilding it.
Okay, so the one down further near Richard is brand new. On the same side you're picking Richard on.
I don't know where Rich is, so I couldn't answer that.
As you come down River Street and as you go towards Route 2, there's three or four houses on your left-hand side. One of those four houses is Richard and the one next to it on the other side is a brand new house.
Okay, I'll take your, the one, I know the one that is, I believe, is currently under construction. That's the house that they had a fire. We did an A and R for them. Um, that's the house that's a fire and they're rebuilding.
Okay, so I, I mean, I think that one of the things that I feel protective about is I really do want affordable housing. I have to consider where it's going and how it impacts the rest of the community around the units or units that go up. And I think that that's probably a little bit of, of, of maybe where I would be coming from, where it might in terms of being congested in the area that probably needs to breathe a little more. And I, I'm not, I'm not in any way suggesting not to do it, but I'm suggesting that we need to give it some thought about how it's done because it may come back to bite the state.
I hear you. I think, um, so the idea with the district is that the, the places that need room to breathe have room to breathe in rural residential. And then Central Village is supposed to be more dense. That's the kind of the purpose of it. And if I can offer you an example, so the quarter acre change would be Central Village and Village Residential. One of the properties that came to mind when I was thinking about an example of this is the candy store, that empty space and then the freight house. That candy store and the empty space, I believe, are one lot. Say the owner that wanted to have the candy store, be it a lot, and then sell or build something on that middle empty space downtown. They could make that candy store a quarter acre instead of a half an acre and they might be able to, you know, make that middle parcel its own lot. So you're not building 12 houses in Irving Center. You're, you're making one parcel that's already there, smaller, and then you're, you know, you're breaking off another piece to infill. I think of all of the over on like Pratt Street and, um, you know, in your neighborhood, Moonlight, where there's a lot of those parcels are less than a quarter acre.
That's right. No, I hear you. I just, I just need to just be clear about it and give it some more thought. I don't know where you are, Mike, with it, but it seems like you've given it a lot of thought, so I just need to give it some more thought as well. Now, you know, I want to do what's right. And I also like your idea in the area about the candy store place, that'd be fine. But if they were all like that, then it would, it wouldn't be a hard question to answer. I just think that some of them are different.
Agreed. Absolutely. None of, you know, not all situations are the same. Um. So I know with you, in the past, you've mentioned you want changes to the site plan review. Deb, I know that you sent over some ideas about the ADUs. I had drafted definitions a while back and I know that you sent over some examples. My request would be, we've been working on this for about a year now. If there are more changes that you all need to think about or come up with, that you do that between now the next meeting or now in the November meeting. I love you all, but I can't keep coming to every single planning board meeting to present this. Um, and if you all would like to bring this to a special town meeting or the annual town meeting, I'm happy to work with you to make that happen. But I think I, it would be helpful to me to have work on this between meetings and then have the decisions made as a group during the meetings. That way, you know, I'm not sitting here scrolling through every single thing.
I agree. I agree, Mariah. We should, we should be more organized about it. All right.
I think you've all gotten through a time. I mean, you know, if you think back to a year ago where we were at with this, we've all had some really great discussion about kind of the picture of where Irving's going. And I really appreciate that I've been able to be part of these discussions because I find it interesting and fun and I, I like talking with you all. So, I mean, take a second to acknowledge how far you've gotten. Um, and I, I did a little bit of digging, um, to figure out how kind of the timeline, I know we talked before about what the requirements of the public hearing are. I was able to find those and kind of make a schedule of working backwards, what that might look like. I didn't get a chance to do it if you wanted to vote on this this fall at a special town meeting. But I, I did it based off of a special town meeting in March. If you had town meeting March 5th, you would need, Brian usually needs like six to eight weeks of working with the select board to draft the warrant. So that means that we would need a confirmed report to Brian around January 8th. Four weeks before that, we would have to have a confirmed report to the select board saying what our recommendations are. Um, that gives you, you know, a month to have your meeting. Then there's the date of the public hearing, which would be in December. You need to advertise a public hearing for 15 days, which would be November 25th. Three days before that, you need to actually send the advertising company the ad to run. That would be November 22nd. And then you need two weeks to submit the proposals to the select board and then they have to actually submit them back to you. Um, and so that would bring you to November 8th. So that's to say, if you had everything voted on and ready to go by the end of your next meeting in October, then you would be able to make a March special town meeting. So it takes a long time to actually do this. And there is some wiggle room that I left there. Brian may not need a full eight weeks. You can maybe confirm your report to the select board the same day as your public hearing. But ultimately, it takes several months to actually finalize this. Once you have actually all voted on everything and you've agreed to make your proposals, this, then this process starts, your public hearing, making your recommendations, yada, yada, yada.
Well, I'm impressed, Mariah. Thank you just to the back. I'm impressed.
Thank you.
We definitely work with.
Yeah.
I'd actually like to ask, see, is how we, um, voted them tonight, if we couldn't begin sending the PUD and the zoning map to the Board of Selectmen now and maybe have a meeting with them in October. Um, so we could begin the process of getting their feedback from that. Um, so that way we could at least get that one moving in the pipeline.
That would make sense, Deb. Yeah, I think.
So how would we do that, Deb?
Um, we need the document, so we would just need to submit a letter. Like the one Mariah was drafting to the board and asking them if we can have a meeting with them to discuss it.
So what do you guys think about that?
Um, I'm in favor of doing that. Sure. Would it be a special one or would it be during their regular, um, select board meeting?
We'd, we'd request to do it on a Monday night meeting. Um.
And just take up like, I can say half an hour of their time, but I don't think it's, it might be longer. I don't know, given our meetings take a while.
Yeah, and I think you would really only be presenting it briefly. You know, they have the paperwork ahead of time in their select board packet, so they'll be able to read through it. And usually they're pretty good about questions ready to go. So, um, you know, it might be that you all kind of explain, hey, we've been working on these big changes, but with right now, we have the map ready to go. We'd like to do a public hearing on just the map. You know, what are your thoughts? And so hopefully it would be a 15, 20 minute conversation.
That sounds good.
A map and the PUD. I agree, the PUD ought to probably go in there too, so.
Um, so do, does Mike do that or who sends it over?
I'm happy to draft the letter, the memo, like I started to draft the main one and then, um, I guess, would just have it be from you all. Um, I don't know. Mike, if you wanted to look at it before I sent it, you could, but I think it'll just say everything that you've talked about, which is you want them to look at the zoning map, which includes the PUD map on it and then the PUD language that goes with that.
Right. That would be good. That would be a big start to the everything.
Okay.
I would just throw it out there. I know the Board of Selectmen has a ton that there, they've, there's major projects going on and stuff. Um, that maybe we ask for a meeting on October 4th because the other thing that's going to be starting soon, as much as I hate to say this, is budget season. Yeah, you laugh. So then it's gonna be even, it's gonna be even harder. Because once budget season really, really kicks off, it's, it's a three or four month process. Um, and it's weekly night, it's Monday night meetings with every department head and all that kind of stuff. So I think the sooner we could get in front of them with at least this part of it, the better.
How much time, Deb, does it give us before that Monday night meeting?
If it's the fourth, unless Mariah feels that's too soon to prepare the, the memo and stuff, it would give, um, you know, if Mariah gets it to them within a week, it would give them a week to look it over. So the fourth is, I think, two weeks out, if I calculated right.
Yep. So yeah, so next, this coming Monday is the 20th, then it's the 27th, then there's the fourth. So it's about three weeks away to, to. And I can absolutely get that drafted and sent over by probably Tuesday.
All right. All right, should we make a, should we do that to, um, somebody want to make a motion to, uh, send a, a letter to the select board to meet October 4th to present the PUD in the, the zoning map.
Yep. So I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
To send for review um, to the select board. The as the PUD and draft the zoning map.
Correct. Good.
And request a joint meeting for October 4th.
And request a meeting for October 4th. And Deb seconds.
Yep.
Now, I have a question. Oh, yeah, we're actually, go ahead.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So my question is, we don't meet before that, before the October. What, what if we have any conversation about this thing just before it goes? I mean, how do we handle it?
I think those, we've already agreed to everything there. You know, the PUD we agreed to and the, the draft zoning map you agreed to today. So we should all be in, in agreement that, with that. If there's, I don't think, you know, those are pretty safe things to present to them.
And then once the select board sees it, if they have any questions or, you know, whatnot, then we can re-discuss those changes or not, so, right?
Right.
Yeah, that'll give us time. We can make changes at our October meeting.
Right?
The other thing to keep in mind is that if, you know, I'm assuming that Monday, you will be making your recommendation about having Janice being on the board and the select board will say yes. So the joint meeting on October 4th will be Janice's first meeting if she chooses to join. So obviously she's coming in at kind of tail end of this section of the updates. So it might be nice for someone to reach out to her and update her on what work what you've been doing and kind of, you know, where you're at so that she's not just jumping into a joint meeting wondering what the heck is going on.
Yeah, I can reach out to her if, uh, oh, oh, once, once she's on board, I can try to explain to her what a PUD is.
Yeah, um, and I think I have sent her or showed her an example, but after you talk to her, I can, I can send her, or you can send her, duh, you have email too. You can send her the example language of the PUD and the map so that she knows, you know, she can look at it before the meeting.
Yeah. I think just the way you described it is better than reading through it where it's like a campus type of environment with one entrance and exit and more freedom within, you know.
Yeah.
And what's Janice's last name again?
Vega, Vega Flarus, but.
Vega Lirose, I believe.
Vega Lirose.
It's V E G A hyphen. And, oh, Mariah, you may have to open her letter and double check it for me. I think it is L I R O S as in Sam. I think. Don't quote me on that one.
L I O S?
L I R O S.
That's how it is spelled.
Okay.
I just looked at her email and that's how she spelled it in her email.
All right.
Vega Laurus. Okay, cool.
So I guess the other things, if anybody has that, I do like, I would like to get these site plans and special permit sections updated when we, you know, before we go to town meeting. So I, I'll, those are the things that we've talked about. I know you, people have questions about who's responsible for Native American surveys and pollinators.
If you're able to actually make recommendations for what you want to see there, that would be really helpful. Because I know that you've mentioned, you know, I, obviously the number of copies is a little bit more self-explanatory. Have a suggestion for the numbers, that would be great. But I don't know what you're looking for for these. So if you can kind of write up. So if you can kind of write up what you're looking for, that would be really helpful to moving forward quicker.
Okay. And what's the word, again, Mariah, for the low impact stormwater you call it? It's a different.
I call it green infrastructure.
Green infrastructure.
There's different words for it that all kind of mean the same thing.
Okay. Yeah, I'll put something together on that, because I'd like to get that included in the, and then the marijuana bylaws will update. And I think we did the introduction way back last year, so. And the code changes, that's quite a, to get these all done by November is gonna be.
Well, you're not, I'm gonna tell you right now, you're not gonna get all of these done by November. I think Deb's point was trying to do the map and the PUD this fall.
Okay.
For March or May-June annual town meeting, you would try to keep plugging away and do the rest.
Yeah, and I actually, I'd kind of like to just throw a suggestion out there. I think trying to go over four or five topics in one night is a lot, just because we get so in-depth with our topics. So I almost wonder if it would be better if for our next meeting, you know, we do our basics like minutes and all that stuff. And then we take a topic, and that's the topic we work on that night. I just wonder if we could get through them a little quicker, because then we could dedicate, I think our meetings go about two hours. So we would have that whole chunk of time to dedicate to one topic. And whomever is presenting, you know, Mike, I know the site plan and the special permit is important to you. So if you were doing that for October, for example, if you got us any supporting documentation and stuff, say, a week before our meeting date, then we all can take the time to review. So when we're coming to the meeting, you're ready to present, we're ready with our questions. And then maybe that would help speed up, you know, and be a little less jumping around.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I'm open to suggestions. Everything we talked about tonight, though, was something we needed to talk about. All right, that's, I think the next meeting's October twenty first. And we'll meet jointly Monday night with the select board, the twentieth, and then hopefully October fourth, you're suggesting, Deb.
Yep.
There's two meetings before our, our next meeting.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Correct.
The twentieth and the fourth, okay?
The fourth isn't confirmed yet.
But the twentieth is.
Yeah. Okay, anything else, any new business? You're muted, I can't hear you.
And I think that's good for tonight. Do I make the motion to adjourn, or do you make the motion to adjourn?
You can make it, I second.
Okay. So I'll make the motion to adjourn at nine oh four. Adjourn, nine oh four. Okay, and Mike seconds.
All in favor? All right, thank you, everybody.
All right, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, everybody, good night.
All right, we'll see you, night.